... Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One? Okay, let's begin by 30 minutes of the February the 5th, 2019 meeting, please.
Mr. Baker, Mr. Wilkinson.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we're on the public comments, on the regular public comments, and we have any rag?
No, sir.
No, sir, thank you. So, we don't have anyone here tonight?
Anyone in part, thank you.
I was thinking about your editorial again.
I just took pictures. Huge crowd.
Uh, you were a psychic on that one. Okay, uh, what I'd like to do now, though, is open the, uh, the floor up regarding the, uh, public hearing according to provisions of Western Kentucky Code eighteen dash five dash forty-five. The floor will be open to receive public comments regarding the proposed school calendar for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty school year. This pre- the proposed calendar patch, and I thought Mr. Smith here might want to say a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Chrisley. Let me, I see, I've given board members a copy of this year's current calendar, as well as a draft copy of the proposed calendar for nineteen twenty, and the checklist that we follow to make sure we have all the components of the statute and the calendar.
It follows all the year's show, twenty twenty, I think. It's only been a few years, but they help.
Yeah, I'll give us Sean a picture.
Yeah, I, yeah, I have one on my desk. Thank you.
I think someone made fun of me last year because I used the yardstick to point something. I got the new toy tonight.
No point in my side.
I'll use, um, Sean's terminology, I think I saw on Twitter feed, this year's calendar, proposed calendar for, or nineteen twenty proposed calendar is broadly similar. All right, Sean?
Yes, sir.
To the, uh, current calendar that we have. And that's by design, and we want to try to be consistent, uh, when we start the school year, when we end the school year, when we have graduation, the length of the breaks and where those are located. Um, there are a few changes that we had to make out of, um, out of necessity, and one of the biggest ones, um, what, what kind of held us up in being able to complete this calendar this year was the last few years, we have been hoping graduation on a Friday before Memorial Day, and we wanted to try to keep that same day. And in order to do that, we had to back our calendar up one more day. We wanted to bring the employees back on the twelfth of, um, August, but it just wouldn't let us. I mean, there was no way to get there without having to go back one more day, because if we did, didn't do that, we ended up having six instructional days after the graduation date, and you're only allowed the maximum of five instructional days after the seniors' graduation. So, we had to really work backwards from the graduation date this year. That won't be a problem in years moving forward. We've already kind of looked ahead and, um, just the way that Easter falls, uh, and what we assume, I guess, assumption about what the testing window will look like in the future, the summative assessment. We're going to be okay with, uh, being able to start, like, on the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth of August as we move forward. But for next year, we're proposing to bring our employees back on Friday, uh, the ninth. And I, to be honest, you helped develop the calendar. Another option to, to stop, you know, that we wouldn't have to come back on that Friday was to shorten the Christmas break, and that would have possibly caused a situation where we'd had to bring employees in over the break. Remember, we're just going to try to squeeze an OS day in. So, we tried a few things, uh, to, to different, uh, versions of this calendar before we finally settled on the one that you see here, uh, tonight. So, we, we bring our employees back on the night, two CD days, a preparation day, just as we did this year. Uh, just as we did this year, we have four professional learning days built into the calendar. So, we have one October the fourteenth, we've got one December the twentieth, February the seventeenth, and April the tenth. And those serve also as our faculty senate days, so that prevents us from having to have two-hour early dismissals so that the teachers can have their faculty senate days. Plus, we do some, have the opportunity to do some professional development with our teachers since we have them all day, and that's been really beneficial this year. We just had a PL day, uh, Monday, and it allowed us an opportunity to train our teachers on the, uh, general, general summative assessments. Uh, so, we were able to go ahead and knock that out this year and not have to, uh, send students home early one evening to do that, so. Thanksgiving break, uh, is the same, it's week long, November the twenty-fifth and twenty-ninth. Christmas break, uh, I think is maybe a day longer in next year's calendar. I, I counted it before and I, I'm just shooting from the head here, but it's, it's, it's close to the same number of days, it may be a day longer. We also make sure that February the seventeenth and October the fourteenth, when we chose those dates, those dates, October fourteenth is Columbus Day, February seventeenth is President's Day, and those are federal holidays, and oftentimes banks, post offices, uh, they're closed, some school districts are closed, so we, we put those two days in there, at least the students will be able to stay home on those days, although the staff will report. So, that's why we chose those two, uh, days for PL days. I can't show the whole screen, so I'm struggling just a little bit here to pull everything up. There is an election next, uh, next May that threw us off too, when we were working on the, uh, calendar. The guidelines we were given, um, were just a little inaccurate. So, we finally figured out what was causing our calendar to be off on one day, and it's a fact that there is a primary election, uh, next May, uh, on the twelfth, two thousand and twenty. All right, so the first day of employment is going to be, uh, August ninth. The first instructional day for students is August the fourteenth, and this year it was what, August the sixteenth, so just off by a couple of days when the kids come back. Last day of second month, uh, which is a big day as far as when we submit our enrollment numbers, is, uh, October the third. The last day of first semester is January the first, two thousand and twenty. The last instructional, last day of instructional term is June the first, and the last appointment day, we don't have to make up any days for, depending on weather, is June the second. Calendar is due to the State Department for their approval, May the fourth. So, we, we hold our public hearings kind of, uh, in coordination with, with what's going on with the legislature. I think there is one deal out there right now, vulnerable to calendar, and I can't even remember that deal, it was introduced. But essentially, if that deal was to make its way through, instead of requiring a hundred and eighty days of instruction, it would require a hundred and seventy days. There hasn't been much said about that deal, and I, and after the meetings, though, I can get to the deal number, I have it written down inside my computer. So, um, anyway, we, if sticking with the legislative session, if there was any changes that would come down, that we would have to go back and revise, that our calendar had to give us enough time to do so prior to submitting it in the matter. Does anyone have, uh, any questions?
If I'll be in on twenty-nine instructional days, that little box that's right in there where your cursor is. Now, um, the PL days, even though they're listed, they really aren't non-instructional days, are they?
PL days count as instructional days.
Because if you total all those, it actually comes out to twenty-five if you were to count those five, but you don't do that day.
No.
But is that why we want to have four, that's in the right-hand column of your side of that?
Uh, yeah, it's just the way they set up this, um, formatted this calendar.
Five are still permissible, but we're only going to use four, right?
That's correct. So, we could use five, we're only going to use four. Somewhere appears, oh, yeah, and that's, that's the box right here which says, "Use of equivalent time option," we have to check that box and write in there, yes. That's where we're accruing, uh, thirty minutes or more in each one of our schools in additional instructional time. That's what allows us to have those PL days. So, we have to check that box or write in that box if we are, yes, using, uh, equivalent times, so have those PL days. So, again, very similar, uh, to our current year's calendar. There's not a whole lot you can do with those OS days, and as you see in the guidelines, the checklist, and there are certain places those have to, uh, have to occur in the calendar. It used to be the guideline, you know, for the school calendar was about an inch thick, it was, I used to hand those out to you, there was a lot of information contained in the statute, the code, that's all been reduced now, it's just a little tighter playbook that they give us to follow. There's a lot of prescriptions on the calendar in terms of where some of these dates have to be placed. Allow for very little flexibility, other than when you can start and you can end, and the length of your breaks, because everything else just kind of falls into place.
You have to have six faculty senate days now. Four of ours are on the PL days, right?
Right. So, one to start the school year, one to end the, end the school year, and then four to begin.
You've got them to P day?
Those are the PL day, oh, the P day is, yeah.
That and the faculty senate meetings with the other two.
Yes. Preparation days. And this, see, this calendar would give us, if we lost instruction prior to February the fourteenth, would give us all the, uh, seven, seven days that we could make up for lost instruction next year, and as I, as I pointed out in the past, you also can get approval to use that preparation if needed. So, you could have eight days there, really, and make up for lost instruction.
Plus, any other days?
Your OS days.
Well, I mean, any outside.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, those are always.
Such as spring break or anything.
So, it's a theoretical question. You said you can only have five instructional days after graduation, what would happen if we had a terrible winter and happened to break into these days in June, these, these O days in June, how, how do those two laws come aboard?
That's a great question, and, and the answer to that is, is once the calendar has been approved, the graduation day is locked. So, if we have to add on twenty additional days at the end of the school year, we're still on graduation on the same day.
So, basically, you have to set a calendar that only provides for five days afterward, and if unforeseen circumstances arise, they look the other way?
Right.
Okay.
Perceived.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it could affect everybody, the law says you can't have more than five instructional days after graduation.
Everybody else, they can go after that.
No, no, what I'm saying is, Jeff said the law is you can only have five instructional days after graduation.
Right, for seniors.
Oh, okay.
It is just for seniors.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's spelled out in here on the guidelines, um, number eleven, high school graduation dates are scheduled no more than five instructional days prior to the last day of instruction. So, you've got, you have five days in there that you do instructional after graduation.
So, we want to have seniors going to graduate on the twenty-second, come back with five more days class?
No, they don't like.
So, explain this to me, this makes no sense. Seniors aren't coming back after graduation. What's the point of having a five-day restriction after they graduate?
I think they don't want you to have graduation any, any earlier, the kids would be missing out, the seniors would be missing out on instruction. So, they'd say no earlier than five instructional days remaining in school.
But if circumstances, they think by weather, they get more.
Eat, eat, lunch more.
Yeah, right. I said that, I mean, that's, I think the checklist in the years past was a page, page left, along with, we're just going some, uh, boards of things that we had to make sure we consider, so we, we asked, but significantly simplified.
And it says, "Are scheduled no more than."
Right.
There you're out. Set the schedule at no more than five days.
Schedules doing a level of lifting.
Doesn't matter what really happens.
You're right.
It's aspirational.
We haven't had any feedback really come, uh, we've shared this, we put it on the, on the county website, we've shared with presidents, we've shared with faculty senate, presidents, and, uh, teachers, and, uh, we've not really received any feedback, any, any kind of comments, suggestions, uh, regarding the calendar.
This is basically, and I know there's tweets here and there and a lot of changes, but this is basically the same calendar format that everybody approved, was three years ago, that all the different committees looked at and voted that this was the best format, basically?
Right.
So, other than changing days to comply with different back-off numbers and things, this.
It, it has been about two years.
And what, our goal has been all along for, for these several years, is to be consistent and try, so for people to complain from one year to the next. I'm on vacation this summer, I kind of know, maybe when I leave, when the schedule will find reservations the next year. We've been fairly consistent there, from the start of the beginning.
And this calendar definitely provides consistency to probably been a good one in the past two, three years.
I like that. And you said PL days, they work well, so that's, I, I like, again, how these early hours and all that.
Me too. I mean, the attendance is usually really, you know, low on these days, uh, both in Queens and Zanes.
You know, right off the jump, many counties do that.
Use PL days. There's, there's, well, there'll be more counties this year use PL days, um, than they did this, like, this current year, from one on here.
I'm not sure everybody understood them last year.
No, they didn't. So, we're kind of out there, uh, there's two or three other counties that, that have been, this current school year, yeah. I'm hearing there's been no counties this year.
Good, you were a bit ahead of them. Okay, anybody have anything else you can see there, any comments, questions, or something? And we'll have one more hearing. I'm sure we'll, uh, if everybody aware of it, it's thing every time.
It's March the fifth.
Is it March fifth? Second. Now, when will we actually vote on, will we vote on that, at that meeting?
I believe that's what we've done in the past.
I was thinking so. We should know that the, uh, sometime in the next year. Anybody have anything? We'll, 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 it was much better when you didn't have that stick up there, you know, I'm doing it in breath. You mean breaking news, and you don't. Okay, let's move to the administrative section, we didn't have the presentations, Mike, we have the hearing numbers. Is that new, Brownie? You're on second to that?
Yeah.
Item A is out of state travel for the following employees. Item B is school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or student outings, and have to present volunteer presentation.
That's decided, right? Okay, anybody have any concerns, or comments, or questions about this thing? If not, is that all, yes, buddy?
Yes.
Let's go to finance, have a good night next week?
Great.
Turning the investment book. Okay, finance, that's right.
Schedule of invoices covering five hundred and seventy-nine thousand and seventeen dollars and ninety-eight cents, that must be missed catch.
Is it a big change since your update on, sorry, the tax collection, anything, unexpected?
No, I'll have a little bit more about that in the morning, but they're still down.
I mean, for my next month. Unexpected as ever. Okay, no one has any questions about the invoices or any big?
Uh, there, there's an item for the Lincoln Journal for si- almost seventeen hundred dollars for transportation parts. It might be for a legal ad, but that, that seems very expensive for a bid ad. It's on the last page. Well, that's Tom Robinson selling you parrots for bosses, I wouldn't put it past him.
Somebody put the larger code on there.
Okay.
It should be, um... I can't remember what it should be, it's not putting in. I'll get into that one.
Okay.
You, you aren't sure if it's transportation-related, right?
I wouldn't think, now Rod would put a bid out for seventeen hundred dollars, now Greg put some larger ads out in the, in the last couple of months.
They're, but they're, I mean, they're sold.
We'll pull that tomorrow.
What idea have we have about the, uh, the gym boards and all?
They're a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars at, at most, yeah.
I, I was thinking of the ones I've seen in there.
I think.
The one for the financials is probably expensive.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's big, it's two pages, I mean.
We'll pull that in.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's any amendment necessary on that, you want to share that with us?
I'll let you know, uh, well, maybe more.
As I said, we have to put our agenda tomorrow, like, for the next week.
Or I'll be up first.
But I'll probably be on the agenda next week, too.
Well, but if there needs to be a change, they'll need to have that on the agenda that goes out first, then.
Clear.
Okay? Okay, with that being said, is that, and all this on the finance side? Yes, okay. Go to personnel, please. Carol, Amy, and Brown. Yeah?
Okay, item A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel, item B, employment of professional personnel, item C, employment of a particular personnel, item D, leave of absence, item E, retirements and resignations. We've got a few more requirements on there, you can see. Uh, and then also, uh, February fifth meeting, we had Stephen Higgins transferring from Route eleven, not Route twenty-six, we have a long route. And, uh, have a change, I hope everyone can do it, have a meeting Friday, and Leslie was there, and we planned our hearing on April the ninth, she's going to be in Hawaii, if we have any hearing, first and after. Just wondering if everybody was available, March the twenty-eighth, Thursday, March twenty-eighth, if we have any here, just have a fine.
March twenty-eighth is fast.
And if not.
What day is that?
On Thursday.
Thursday?
It'll be if necessary.
And that's in lieu of the April ninth?
Instead of April ninth, Leslie's available, but if everybody can let me know for sure, or if you can't, let me know, and I'll get back with Leslie, try to find another day. We're in a meeting, another one director's, she's going to be in Hawaii, so that's, I want to celebrate my fifth birthday.
Oh, that's what you said?
Yeah.
Open for me. So, what's the date that's now coming off the calendar deal?
Well, it's, I don't know if it's coming off yet.
It wasn't on, okay, that's good.
I hope we don't have any.
We, we might know more tomorrow, I don't know. Okay, anything else? If I have any questions, if I need to. Well, I tell you, we're getting these retirements, some of the, uh, ones have been around a while, retirements.
The fifty-fourth is top percent work rate. Forty-two now, forty-two.
Oh, well, we have to go to a lot more of those payers, these recruiting. Okay, is that all, yes, on personnel?
Yeah.
All right, we're down to comments concerning board members. Everybody enjoy the conference last weekend?
I did. I actually did. Saturday was very good, you know, I'm telling you. Steve may disagree, but I really enjoyed Saturday.
No, no, I, I understand why Saturday was good. Why you enjoyed it.
Uh, now, we're sorry that you didn't take to the conference same things I did.
I, but there were some good, I liked Steve Williams' presentation.
Yes, I was, and you weren't.
You're nuts, Carol. Steve?
Well, did you talk to her?
I don't even, what you're, what is this sidebar going on up here?
She doesn't remember me being at the conference all day Saturday.
He was sitting with you.
She wasn't at our table. That was a setup, if you remember, Steve, we commented on that. You sat by yourself.
What was your third round, eh?
You were not, you were not, I don't mean anything out of you. I have proof that I was there, I talked to one of the presenters afterward, okay?
Now, we get to why this meeting was good, this conference.
Great topics. Who wouldn't be enthused listening to Mayor Steve Williams talk about how he solved the English crisis? Dr. Anderson? Talk about her research.
Right.
Forcoming report with hopefully some help on the opioid problems we face.
That's right, that's right.
And then the general session was good as well.
You know, everybody got to come out and say, "We ought to be political and assertive."
Right. Rankings of legislature of the senators based on this base in the educational process.
They wanted to do that, and they wanted to be real political, and then Dr. O'Call came up as a spoiler. We're a five-oh-one C organization.
But that doesn't prevent individual board, individual board members from politicking.
They were getting wound up there, though.
Yes, they were.
They were to rate everybody and all kinds of stuff, which I'm not used to, but, but maybe Howard knows more. Five-oh-one C, we can't do that. Okay, anything else, anybody? This may give you practice in passing.
Oh, you did.
There are, you know, they were there.
I'm happy to announce this evening that we are going to be able to hire three more social workers, is able to work that out in our federal budget, so those positions, are they posted currently, Bill, or about to be posted?
Yeah, they're posted.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll hire a social worker for heavyweight, ham, and down ballot, let him get us a social worker, every one of those, let's meet. Hopefully, be able to do that. I can't believe it's this time of year, and we, we need to schedule a student celebration to recognize our spelling bee winners, Mathful Day winners, and writers. Seems like we just had a celebration, time flies. I'm looking at March the nineteenth, well, that's a regular coordinating, at five P.M., an hour before the board, the regular board meeting starts. March the nineteenth, at five P.M. Mathful Day, spelling bee, then writers, I think maybe some robotics. If you're available, that's, that's the pair.
We have a board meeting.
We have a board meeting. Everybody's good?
Yeah, I do.
I'll check back.
I'll check back. His wife has sent out a message to the students and parents. That's all I have. Any work session anywhere?
All right. Anybody have anything else before we conclude this evening? Well, listen, gentlemen, for Wednesday, February the twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, for a special day at nine a.m., here in Hammond tomorrow, and then we'll come back for a regular, next regular meeting on February the twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, at one p.m. here in Hammond. Motion. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Baker. Oh, yes?
Yes.
All right.